...with me. I don't want to give you this. I really don't. But Kelly, you certainly have been an asset to this village. And I certainly appreciate your efforts. So, on behalf of the Village of Rosas Point, here's a little token of our appreciation. And I don't want to read this whole thing, just turn around so she can get a picture of it.
Okay, but you're gonna have to show me it's not again, won't?
Yes, it did.
You're gonna have to do this again.
Uh-huh, here.
Okay, it just, it just...
Welcome. What you got it set on?
I didn't do anything, I just turned it...
Okay. Wow, what's the matter with you over there?
There you go. Can't take a picture, you gotta...
There you go.
There, you got it.
Yeah, she got it. Small, George.
Wife, can I go for another one?
Sure.
Sure.
Take your best shot. You don't want me to hold that smile so long, Carol. Thank you, Kelly, for you.
Yeah, that's good.
Thank you. Thank you, Kelly.
I'll give you the box.
Sure, yeah.
Want to say for me?
Thanks, no, I'm just gonna go, actually. Thank you.
Thank you for being on the board. Sorry, we're gonna dress up for it.
Just to say thank you for all the kind words. Had a lot of fun.
All right. Next thing on the agenda is, uh... We need to square and trustee Jefferson and trustee Cooper. Go down to our next, uh...
Yes.
No, I'm just kidding.
Where do you want it?
Whatever.
Where do you want it?
I'm gonna tell you what, these are, I hope you got a wide angle. What you can do first?
Raise your hand if you have to me. I, Brian B. Jefferson.
I, Brian B. Jefferson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
And support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And I will faithfully discharge duties of village trustee.
And I will faithfully discharge duties of village trustee.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability. Thank you.
Mr. President? I, John Cooper.
I, John Cooper.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And I will faithfully discharge duties of village trustee.
I will faithfully discharge duties of village trustee.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Where's your animals?
John, did he call?
Oh, you have to sign the book.
Oh, that's what you said, don't forget to sign the book.
Oh, yeah, exactly. Sign the holy book. Congratulations, John. Can I have your autograph?
Yes.
You even got extra pens to hand out. I like the...
Yeah, exactly. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Stanley Moore wants to sign this book.
That's right. Remind me, Stanley. That's right. Congratulations, Charlie. All righty. Open the meeting for comments in the public at this time, anybody wishing to address the board, they do so. No comments from the public, you'll have a chance at the end of the... Thanks, Kelly.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly.
Good, Kelly.
You'll have a chance at the end of the meeting. Bid results, contract, uh, two thousand nine dash three, control relay panel for outdoor power transformer protection.
There was only one bid that we had received, um... We had opened it, and then I found out that our electrical engineer had sent these out electronically to other customers, and he had put a different date for the bid opening. So, we are going to, I'm gonna ask that you deny this bid, and I will send it out for rebid. That's okay?
You want to motion or not?
Yes.
Or make a motion to, uh, cancel the bid, or...
Reject the bid.
Reject a bid? It's our kind of a motion.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Burts, is there any discussion? If there be no discussion, all those in favor, vote with the use of a sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Bid results on contract two thousand nine dash four, large diameter hose.
There were two bids received for this, uh, bid. The first bid was from Tyler Fire Equipment. Care of a Chris Twates, Twates, from Osse Report, the total amount was fifteen thousand two hundred. The second bid I was unable to accept because there was not a bid bond or cashier's check. I spoke to Michael Blind, did give him copies of the bid packet, and he recommends that the board accept the bid from Tyler Fire Equipment.
I'll make a motion to accept the, uh, bid for Tyler Fire Equipment for the large diameter hose, fifteen thousand two hundred.
I'll second it.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Cooper, is there any discussion? If there be no discussion, all those in favor, vote with the use of a sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried for board's information. Oh, that money came from the FEMA grant, it's, uh, no charge to the village.
Excellent.
Okay, minutes of the previous meeting of March sixteenth and March nineteenth. You all have copies? Is there any additions or deletions?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of the previous meeting of, uh, March sixteenth and March nineteenth.
I'll second. Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Burke, is there any discussion? If there be no discussion, all those in favor, vote with the use of a sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Uh, yeah, the content of bills, board, uh... Need a motion.
We have one addition this evening.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The Development Corporation, amount of thirty-four thousand eight thirty, it's for professional service... Services for the Rosas Point Redevelopment Plan.
I'll make a motion to, uh, pay the bills tonight as amended.
Second.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Burts, any discussion? Are that thirty-four thousand covered by a grant, too, by the way, board? It's not a... Not an issue today.
That's good news.
Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, vote with the use of a sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Correspondents?
Well, the first item I have is from the Clinton County Health Department. It's, "The Adirondack Tobacco-Free Network and Reality Check Programs Work in Partnership with Communities, Businesses, and Organizations in Clinton, Essex, and Franklin Counties to Promote Smoke-Free Environments, Prevent Youth Tobacco Use, and Promote Cessation Services. ATFN and Reality Check are also working to decrease the tobacco industry's reach into our communities by limiting opportunities for sponsorship and promotion at community events, and we invite you to join us in this initiative." And what they've done is they've attached a resolution, if the board would like to be a part of this, um, it's a... How can it... If you adopt a no-thanks policy, um, this, uh, Adirondack Tobacco-Free Network and Reality Check are available to assist. I don't know if everybody had a chance to look at it, but... They're asking for help and promoting this.
There's no financial...
There's no financial...
Yeah, just, uh, resolution supporting this.
I can read the resolution, which is...
No, oh my God.
I'll make a motion to, uh, accept the, uh, amendment of the Clinton County Health Department, no thanks, big tobacco policy.
Second. Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Burts, is there any discussion? If there be no discussion, all those in favor, vote with the use of a sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
The next item I have was a renewal application notice form that was sent to me certified mail from the American Legion, and that's just a notification to the village clerk that they are renewing their liquor license.
Information only, board.
I did receive a letter, uh, from Steve and Sue Merchant, that he and Sue are writing to us, to you today, in order to bring to your attention what we believe would be a matter of great interest to the people of Rosas Point. We feel that it would be advantageous to the community to build an outdoor stage at the recreation center here in Rosas Point. With so many events occurring throughout the summer months, it would be wonderful to have an outdoor stage situated in our village surroundings and would bring many opportunities to utilize our recreation center. This stage could be used for such things as weekly, monthly concerts, July Fourth Activities, school events, talent shows, presentations, et cetera. People of the community would be able to bring lawn chairs or blankets and enjoy our beautiful village from an outdoor perspective. We understand with the economy the way it is, it will not be easy, but we are hoping that the village of Rosas Point could possibly look into grants to benefit this project. Thank you in advance for your time and consideration in this matter.
It's a good idea. I'm gonna get the money for you.
Maybe something to look at maybe down the road or something. Uh, the next item I have is from the Clinton County Office for the Agent. It's a pleasure to invite you to attend the sixteenth annual senior celebration. This year's celebration will be held at the Senior Center, uh, in Plattsburgh on May first. This event allows Clinton County residents to observe older Americans' month and Senior Citizens Day, and to honor our oldest citizens. As you may know, this day-long event is usually attended by between five hundred and one thousand senior citizens, family members, agency representatives, and interested individuals of all ages. Federal, state, county, and city officials are being invited to be our honored guests at eleven o'clock P.M., and a draft agenda which they enclose, and the theme for this year is Sensational Sixties. They're just asking if anybody would like to attend.
When is that, May first?
Yep.
Friday.
Yeah, I might be going to New York.
I, uh, I'll, I have the tendency every year, I'll...
Be driving home.
So you want me to send down for two, the two of you?
Yeah, send a name, 'cause they put it on the... On their...
Trying to make it, but my daughter, uh, my granddaughter, yeah.
Anybody else, no?
Pardon?
That's it? I did receive a, another request today from, uh, the Quad Committee in Champlain. They asked if we could announce that, um, they have T-shirts that are gonna be available at the town office for the quadra centennial of four hundred, Explore New York. So it's just an information thing. And I also received, uh, a letter from John Cooper that effective today, April sixth, two thousand nine, I will no longer be a member of the planning board.
Accept that with deep regret. Deep regret. I need a second. I need a second to that motion. Second. Moved by trustee Jefferson to accept, uh, resignation with deep regrets, uh, seconded by John Burts, any discussion? If there be no discussion, all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
And that's all I have.
Thank you, Carol. Okay. The next item is the report of mayor and board trustees. The first thing on my agenda is, uh, the mayor appointments for... The year two thousand nine, two thousand ten. The deputy mayor will be Brian Jefferson. Village clerk for two years, Carol Hatfield. Deputy clerk, Tracy Graves for two years. Village treasurer for two years, Arson Letourneau. Deputy treasurer, treasurer, Rebecca Diesel, one year. Village registration, reg... Rater star, Carol Hatfield, two years. Deputy registrar, Tracy Graves, two years. The attorney, Tom Bernane, one year. Acting village justice, John Favre, one year. Budget officer, Arson Letourneau, one year. Youth commissioner, Janice Lee Letourneau, one year. Library board trustee, Clyde, Father Clyde Lewis, five-year term. Billing and coding, code, and zoning officer, Michael Tatro, one year. Zoning board of appeals, Len Martinson, five years. Planning board member, Jerry Favre, five years. Planning board members who fill the unexpired and expired term of John Cooper is Maggie Berry. Clerk to zoning board, Carol Hatfield, one year. Clerk to the planning board, Jerry Favre, one year. Depository.
Forgot the story.
I just said clerk to zoning board, Carol Hatfield.
Oh, you forgot the name of the story.
Oh, sorry, historian, one year, Donald Racine. Skewed head, missed that, darling. Depository, TD Bank North. P. A. and Champlain National Bank, and the official newspaper, Plattsburgh Press Republic. That doesn't need a motion, does it?
We did last year. Yeah, last year we did.
Okay.
Actually, the only thing that doesn't need motion is the, uh, deputy mayor.
Okay, I need a motion. Deputy mayor?
Anybody can have it. Gonna make a motion to accept America's appointments in the state.
Second. Moved, eh, trustee Burke, seconded by... Trustee Jefferson, any discussion? Yeah, more money involved, yeah. Any discussion? If there be no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. The Village of Rosas Point Mayor Commission Appointments. Police, uh, public safety, police and judicial, John Cooper's chairman, John, Jean Burts is, uh, co-chair. Fire and codes, S.E.Q.R.S., John Cooper and Jean Burts. Sidewalks and streets, Brian Jefferson and Francis Baker. Water, Brian Jefferson and John Cooper. Source system, John Cooper and...
John Burts.
John Burts. Electrical system, Brian Jefferson and Francis Baker. Flood control, storm shore, Francis Baker and Brian Jefferson. Personnel and insurance, Jean Burts and John Cooper. Planning and development, Francis Baker and John Cooper. Shared services... Shared municipal services, John Burts and Francis Baker. Culture and recreation, civic center, parks, and beautification, Francis Baker and Brian Jefferson. Library, historian, and senior in youth, Jean, John Burts and Brian Jefferson. And you don't need any motion on those. It's cut and stone as of now. Review of procurement policy. Now, this policy is the same as it was last year. Is it necessary that I raise this, board?
No.
I will tell you this, that probably next month, we're gonna have to pass a resolution changing this. The, uh, the same budget had been approved, and there is some changes in procurement. But we have not been officially notified. We'll adopt this as it is, and then, yeah, we'll go from there when it comes. I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept that.
Yeah. Moved by trustee Baker, seconded by trustee Cooper, roll call vote, trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Burts.
Aye.
Trustee Baker.
Aye.
Trustee Cooper.
Aye.
The mayor will say aye. Investment policies. Has this changed, or has that...
Nothing's changed.
Nothing has changed. We invest our money wisely. Have any, have we had a chance to read this?
Yeah.
I just need a motion.
Make a motion to accept the, um, investment policy for the Village of Rosas Point as amended on April sixth.
Second. Second, moved by trustee Burts, seconded by trustee Jefferson, any discussion? If there be no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Rules of procedure for public meetings of the board of trustees. This was adopted December seventh, nineteen ninety-eight, and I don't believe there's been any changes.
I'll make a motion to accept the rules of procedure for public meetings.
Second. Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Burts, is there any discussion? If there be no discussion, all those in favor, vote with the use of a sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. The Village of Rosas Point travel policy amended April sixth as of tonight. There's a lot of new stuff in here, have you read it, board?
Yes. I'll make a motion to accept the Village of Rosas Point travel policy as amended on April sixth, two thousand and nine.
Second. Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Burts. Is there any discussion? Are we going to pass this out to every employee?
I think we should. Especially when they go traveling, they should get a, a copy of this so they can understand it. If they have any questions, uh...
That's all I care about, I don't make that...
I always say, yeah. Meet Chicago. Absolutely.
Okay.
They can have it with them when they get their, uh, when they get their advance for travel, or they get their travel, like, we got a couple, uh, tonight they're gonna be traveling. They should, and if they have any questions, they can ask either Carol or Arson.
Oh, the eleventh, 'cause they're going down, uh, and then, uh, Eric Miller's going to Plattsburgh for a week at the same time for, uh, lineman school.
Do you want to give everybody a copy, or have them sign like a checklist, Dan?
Well, I think they should have a copy of this, and then, uh...
I think you should have a copy.
And then they, uh, then they can, you know, review it as...
Well, you give them a copy and have them sign for a copy.
Yeah.
They're gonna get the travel, when they go for their travel, they're gonna get the travel arrangements, and they can, I think it's just good enough, they have any questions, they can... And we could probably get together with them and explain, the biggest items is, uh, I think Arson, uh, highlighted them in a big, bold, black ink. I think it should be, shouldn't be misunderstood. Basically done for, uh, auditing purposes, anyway. You guys approve that, uh, following direction, if they understand them.
God, she's that dead, whole prick.
We should make it over that, Carol, when they come in, to make sure that...
I'll make a list, and we'll have each one of them...
Yeah, just make a copy, keep them in the travel policy.
Okay, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, vote with the use of a sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Schedule of meetings. Should I read all this, Carol, or should we just say anything?
The only thing, the only thing that I, we did change was normally we meet at four fifteen in the afternoon. We changed it to four o'clock, if that's okay with everybody? Like, we have a couple meetings every night.
On, on May twenty-ninth, it says, uh, to close out the books, we're, you know, uh, and we meet the village office at four P.M. And then on, uh, March seventeenth, which is...
That's the election.
The day after St. Patrick's Day.
The two days after the election.
The day after, yeah. So we move to accept the, uh...
Election.
The election results.
That was the only thing that got changed, was moving it to four, as long as everybody's okay with that?
I'll make a motion to accept the schedule of meetings for two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten.
Second. Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Cooper, any discussion? If there be no discussion, all those in favor, vote with the use of a sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Resolution, whereas the board of trustees of the Village of Rosas Point is determined... Determined to pay a fixed rate for mileage or reimbursement to officers, employees of the village who use personal mobile while performing their official duties on behalf of the village. Therefore, be it resolved that the trustees, the board of trustees shall approve reimbursement to such officers and employees at the rate of forty-two cents a mile. This resolution shall take effect immediately, and I need a motion.
Make a motion to accept the resolution to increase the reimbursement, or to have the reimbursement, um, for the village employees and officers to forty-two cents a mile.
Second. Moved by trustee Burts, seconded by trustee Jefferson, roll call vote, trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Vote, you want to go ahead and discussion? Trustee Burts.
Aye.
Trustee Baker.
Aye.
Trustee Cooper.
Aye.
All right. Sorry, John.
What was it last year?
Forty.
Forty-two?
Forty cents.
Forty?
Forty.
You raised it two cents? Well, we raised the mileage for forty-two cents, from forty to forty-two cents.
Use your own car to go from...
You have to use your own car? Is that, you figure that's enough to compensate somebody now, to...
We don't, we really don't pay anybody.
Yeah, since we got the village car.
Right, I realize that, but it's a lot of...
It's a lot of... I use the village truck, though.
Okay, yeah, all right. You feel it's good? Arson, you feel it's a good rate?
Yes.
Or you want to put it in there? Very good.
John?
That's right, where we have them is our, uh, our treasurer.
I have a resolution for budget modification, go ahead, Arson, please.
Whereas the board of trustees deems it advisable to make certain modifications to the two thousand nine, two thousand, two thousand eight, two thousand nine village budget, we therefore resolve that the treasurer is authorized and directed to make the following modifications to the village budget for fiscal year two thousand eight, two thousand nine. In the general fund, the, uh, we are going to decrease appropriations account nine sixty for ninety-nine thousand forty-four dollars, and we're gonna decrease our appropriated fund balance, account five ninety-nine, ninety-nine thousand forty-four dollars. In the water fund, appropriations will decrease fifty-eight thousand five twenty-five, that's account nine sixty. Account five ninety-nine, appropriated fund balance will decrease fifty-eight thousand five twenty-five. In the sewer fund, the, uh, account nine sixty appropriations will decrease thirty-five thousand two thirty-six. Account five ninety-nine will decrease the appropriated fund balance thirty-five thousand two thirty-six. In the library, net results, account five ten, estimated revenues will increase four thousand seven seventy-eight. Appropriations, account nine sixty will, uh, decrease seven hundred and seventy-one dollars. And account five ninety-nine, appropriated fund balance will decrease five thousand five forty-nine. And this is to reflect the changes for rollover monies and stuff in the proposed ten to two thousand nine, two thousand ten budget.
I'll make a motion to accept the budget modifications.
Second. Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Burts. Roll call, uh, any discussion? I won't forget this time. If there be no discussion, roll call vote, uh, trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Burts.
Aye.
Trustee Baker.
Aye.
Trustee Cooper.
Aye.
And the village, the village, the mayor will say aye. It has been a long day, isn't it, right?
I'm used to this new arrangement, that's why...
Is that been answered? I believe, uh, no. I, uh, want to authorize the clerk to publish a legal notice for public hearing for the two thousand nine, two thousand ten tentative budget. Second. Uh, any discussion? If there be no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Also, I want the clerk, uh, motion to authorize the clerk to publish a legal notice for public hearing on Local Law Two for two thousand nine. And what is Local Law Two?
One-year moratorium.
One-year moratorium on store, on downtown storefronts. Second. Okay, any discussion? Uh, if there be no discussion, all those in favor, vote with the use of a sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. And the last thing I have on my agenda is an announcement, uh, me... And the last thing I have on my agenda is an announcement on May first at seven P M. At the Lakeside Coffee Shop, we'll be kicking off the new website. And the reason why we're holding it there is because they have that Wi-Fi connection, so it can bring in our laptops and punch in the website and see what's going on.
That's cool.
And that's it for me. Trustee Jefferson.
Thank you, Mayor. Now, the first item on my agenda tonight is I just want to thank Kelly Penfield for being on the board for the last eight years, her dedication to the board and her good judgment. Appreciate her effort, wish her good wel, good wishes. The second item on my agenda tonight is I'd like to make a motion to authorize Gary Malinsky and Mike Riley to attend some training in Botstean on four fourteen of this year.
Second. Move by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Baker, any discussion? Well, that's a real order.
That's part of their hours, contact hours.
All righty, if there's no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the use of a sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
Okay, the third item on my agenda is I'll make a motion to authorize the clerk to publish a legal notice to hold a public hearing on April twentieth of this year for the community development strategy implementation plan.
Second. Move by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Berth, any discussion? Now, that's a grant that we got from State of New York. They had to spend the money about thirty-first, so that's why that bill was in there, or lose it. And that plan is pretty well put together. These people have did this, have done a nice job. I think you're going to be really pleased with it.
Record. There we go, sixty minutes. Thank you, Mayor. Okay, the next item on my agenda is I'll make a motion to authorize Kim Bennett, John Bernard, Adam Bernard, to train, to attend training on distribution in Blasberg on April twenty-eighth.
Second. Move by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Baker. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the use of a sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
Okay, and this is on the supplemental. I'd like to make a motion to request an executive session for.
I don't see your name on here.
This agreement, Carol, from the, I guess it would be personnel? The agreement with town.
No, that's, that's under, that's, that's the, under John Cooper's proposal.
Oh, okay, it said Brian, okay.
Yeah, that's your problem.
So I'll, that's all I have to report to you, Mayor.
Thank you, trustee Jefferson.
I'll figure about it.
Trustee Berth.
Trustee Berth has one thing on the agenda. That was supplemental. It's the resolution for the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation Opportunity Online Hardware Grant, which I had before. We had, last year, we had donated, committed six hundred and fifty dollars in matching funds, and we have Dodge Memorial Library to be dispersed when needed for the participation in the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation Opportunity Online Hardware Grants for two thousand seven and two thousand, up to two thousand and nine. This is the second year matched to be approved. So I'll need a second on that resolution.
I'll second. I'll second that. Move by trustee Berth, seconded by trustee Jefferson. Is there any discussion, Board? There is no discussion, roll call vote. Trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Berth.
Aye.
Trustee Baker.
Aye.
Trustee Cooper.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye.
And that's all I have.
Don't you have something on the supplement? Oh, no, that's right, I heard, yeah, okay. Okay, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Trustee Baker.
Okay, the first discussion I have is the summer help for the civic center. I make a motion that the hire of Cody at the contract rate, he was, I believe it's what, Carol, you said twenty-nine?
I believe so, yes, until.
Till August twenty-first or something like that, you said?
Possibly the week before, but August twenty-first is the June twenty-ninth.
I'll make a motion to hire.
No, it's already made of.
Or second to hire Cody by the summer.
Motion made by trustee Baker, seconded by trustee Jefferson, any discussion?
Yeah, should we think of hiring, you know, it's a part-time position to help out and direct the cutting gas?
Twenty hours, that's forty hours a week during the summer.
Forty hours, should we try and get maybe more than one person to do that? I think we need to recall from one, one person.
We have a money in the budget or the new budget, Arson? For summer out? You have six hundred and fifty hours. At nine twenty-six an hour. That's the rate you'll be hiring at.
Six hundred dollars.
Or is there money in the budget to hire anybody out for the, for the part-time, or even part-time? This is going to be full-time but part-time for the summer, I mean, full-time for the summer but a part-time position. Right?
Yeah. Yeah, because you talk, how many weeks you talking?
Well, June twenty-ninth until August twenty-first, and we have.
About seven weeks.
Six weeks.
Two hundred and eighty hours. So we've got about four hundred dollars in our two hundred and eighty, so we got two seventy.
We've got five hundred and something a month.
It's six hundred and fifty dollars.
We can find out for sure and bring it up next meeting or.
I thought there was a. Was there a discussion that we should have another person or not?
Should we talk to Mike first?
There's going to be.
It's going to be a full-time position.
Yeah, but you're going to have a lot of extra work.
Oh, yes, I know, everybody's doing what the hell they're sure.
Well, we got, we got the motion for the one, why don't we just go with the one board and then next, next meeting, the discussion.
See if they got the money or not, we'll do the second one.
Sir?
Yeah? There's enough work for another person.
Oh, yes.
I mean, for, you know, it'd be good for, like, Cody's an excellent employee and he's been great and he's going to be going to college pretty soon. You know, it's a good, it's a good summer program for him, plus he helps out a lot in the winter too, in the end, so we can get another person on it. It helps them out with their education and everything.
An excellent employee.
Yes, he's a good employee. All righty, any other discussion, Board? There's not all those in favor, vote by the use of a sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
Hey, second, request executive session to discuss civic center personnel.
Second. Move by trustee Baker, seconded by trustee Jefferson, roll call vote, trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Berth.
Aye.
Trustee Baker.
Aye.
Trustee Cooper.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye.
Okay, the third thing is discussion civic center. This I, we got your quote.
I don't think we'd have to decide on it tonight.
We'll see.
Yeah, see what happens here. The one quote, the second quote wasn't brought in till late this afternoon. And the first quote that we got from Cellu Spray has been sent to I E P. This type of operation was recommended by their engineer, I E P engineer. The one thing I liked in this quote that's not in the other, says, "The existing K-13 on the roof and pirens will be removed and disposed of. Insulation on the main structure beams and sidewalls is in good shape and will remain the same. The deck shall be primed as necessary to pound density. The closed cell spray foam shall be applied." I don't know what that means. Amazing. You know, I like what they're saying.
Yeah, if I understood it correctly, they're, they're going to take the white.
The white, the paper all off.
And then spray it with a.
And they're going to treat the tin.
Treat the tin, right?
Yeah.
Treat that, that's the smarter way to go.
But, we'll send the other one down tomorrow, fax the other one down tomorrow, and then we'll see what I E, I E P says. And then bring it back to the board. I don't expect it much, we'll be done till after July, and maybe in August before you start everything. Okay, Board?
Yeah, that sounds good. See if we're going to get some help, that's me. That's all I have.
Thank you, trustee Baker. Trustee Cooper, you're up in front.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My first thing is requesting an executive session to discuss the possible litigation.
Second. Move by trustee Cooper, who seconded that? Oh, trustee Jefferson. Seconded by trustee Jefferson. Roll call vote, trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Berth.
Aye.
Trustee Baker.
Aye.
Trustee Cooper.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye.
Okay, my second thing this evening, we'll have a little discussion about this. We have a piece of property on eighty-seven Lake Street, we're all familiar with. The code enforcement officer has been ordered to inspect the property. There's trash, he's way out, on the maintenance program, we have the village of things, he's way out of line on this. Also, we had the village engineer go and take a look at it, the building is not safe. So what I would like to do is propose a motion to have the code enforcement officer go forward with whatever he has to do to rectify this problem.
Second. Move by trustee Cooper, seconded by trustee Berth, any discussion? If he won't tear it down, then we'll do what we did before, we'll go out to bed and go run the tax law building, because you know what?
First, somebody else has let, let Mike go forward.
No, I think we could tear down ourselves if we had to.
Or whatever, I think we'll let Mike.
First, you have to do a legal.
Mike is going to, Mike is going to go through the procedure first.
It's the second part of what, you know, we're suggesting they come down anyway, so.
Quite sure that, he knows that we're serious when we want this stuff taken down, since.
The third thing I have tonight is authorize the clerk.
Wait, wait, wait a minute, John. We need a motion to authorize Mike to go ahead.
We did.
We have a discussion.
Okay, we need a vote. Yeah, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Pretty strong aye. All right, John, thank you.
I'm going to authorize the clerk to legalize, to advertise a legal notice about forbid for the control relay panel for the outdoor power transformer protection.
Second. Move by trustee Cooper, seconded by trustee Jefferson, any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the use of a sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
The last thing on the money I did into here is a request for an executive session to discuss code's personnel.
Second. Move by trustee Cooper, seconded by trustee Jefferson, roll call vote. Trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Berth.
Aye.
Trustee Baker.
Aye.
Trustee Cooper.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. And that's it? Thank you, trustee Cooper. Carol?
I have nothing.
Arson?
Here, to both of us. First item is I want to report that last week we received a check from the county for four hundred thirteen thousand eight hundred seventy-nine dollars and fifty-three cents. What that was for was the unpaid taxes that were turned over to the county as of November first, which includes the demolition charges on the former W W D I. Let you know that we got reimbursed for that. The second item is I just want the board to know that on April fourteenth, Becky and I will be going down to the county to look at the tax program. We are also going to be meeting with the Village of Champlain and I think it's the Village of Dannamora, along with Mayor Keyward, that process. We'll check out more information regarding that. And I just want to remind everybody that as of April thirtieth, any unpaid water and sewer will be transferred to the taxes.
That's it? Thank you, sir. At this time, I will open the meeting up to public, anybody wishing to address it, the board may do so. Nobody wishes to address this tonight. Please, I need a motion to vote recess. Need a motion for recess.
Second.
Move by trustee Berth, seconded by trustee Cooper, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. We'll be in recess for five minutes. I'm not skipping a count.